Good morning, I'd like to call this committee. This is gonna be a great day. I'll call the committee a whole meeting for Wednesday, March 20th to order. Madam Clark, could you do a roll call, please?
Thank you Chair Henry, the electronic roll call has now begun.
Declarations of pecuniary interest. Seeing none, there are no statutory public meetings. We have one presentation, Greg Pereira, Manager of Transportation Planning, Chris Leach, Principal Planner in Gerardo Paez. Perfect, Lead Landscape Architect, SBN Architects. Greg, when you're ready, would you please start your presentation?
Thank you. Good morning Chair Henry and committee members, my name is Greg Pereira, Manager of Transportation Planning, and I'm joined today with Principal Planner Chris Leach and also our project consultant, SBN Architects and Planners Gerardo Paez and Mike Hudson. Getting to this stage in the process has taken countless hours of engaging and responding to committee members and presenting to updates to various municipal committees. However, as staff, we are excited by the prospect of this transformative project of creating a linear greenway from Pickering to Oshawa and the lasting impact it can have on Durham residents and visitors to the region. I'd like now to hand it over to Chris and Gerardo, who will provide an overview of the project, highlight opportunities for place making and the project's next steps. Chris?
Thank you Greg, and good morning. I'd like to advance the slide here. So first of all, I'd like to give you all just a quick project overview on the Durham Meadowway. So really, the purpose of the visioning study before you is fourfold. It's comprised of a vision statement and guiding principles. These were created to capture the spirit of the project and guide its planning and design. The second aspect is the alignment of the conceptual trail alignment, so really a desktop review of conditions, planned projects, and various opportunities and constraints, both on the Gatineau Transmission Corridor lands as well as lands nearby. An alignment alternus for the trail and several sections were identified and evaluated where obstacles had to be overcome towards recommending a preferred route. Thirdly, locations for amenities and adjacent uses were identified both within and outside the Transmission Corridor lands as part of the public realm, and this includes gateway features. And finally, implementation considerations are contained in the visioning study, and this is advancing the design and environmental studies required for implementing the multi-use path for constructing it, and that forms part of the recommendation before you today. Now, in terms of a vision statement, this was prepared with agency, municipal and community input, and it really is, "The Durham Meadowway will connect diverse communities in Pickering, Ajax, Whitby and Oshawa with unique and inclusive landscape experience that is both trail and destination, creating opportunities for culture and environmental stewardship." There are six guiding principles that have shaped the vision for the Durham Meadowway and route selection for the trail. They are intended to guide future decisions as well through the planning, design and construction process. So each of these six guiding principles has a few sort of objectives underneath them that are contained in the visioning study report. Now, in terms of the geographical context, the Durham Meadowway runs from Rouge National Urban Park in the west at the Pickering-Toronto boundary to Harmony Road in Oshawa. This map shows the Pickering and Ajax portion of the Durham Meadowway, along with intersecting cycling facilities from the primary cycling network in the regional cycling plan that both existing and future, as well as nearby conservation areas, parks and open spaces, and the regional trail network. The western gateway would connect to Bear Hill Park, which is actually owned by the city of Toronto but is within the Rouge National Urban Park boundary, and then through there, it would connect to the Scarborough Meadowway, which really helped inspire this project, as it is largely on the Gatineau Corridor in Scarborough. Connections to the Seaton Trail in Pickering would potentially connect to the south side of 407, and then along the Hydro Corridor, south of 407 in York Region is the South York Greenway. And actually Gerardo will touch on that project a little bit later, so that's a really good connection potential. And then there's also a north-south connection to the Trans-Canada Trail in the west end of Ajax. In terms of the eastern section of the Durham Meadowway in Whitby and Oshawa, there are connections to the Green Belt Cycling Route that runs along Myrtle Road in Whitby, and this would connect through Ashburn Road and the Iroquois Trail, and then south along a Green Belt Cycling Route connection to the Waterfront Trail. And there are planned trails in creek valleys as part of the regional trail network, and on the north-south Transmission Corridors, the one east of Anderson and Whitby, where there's sections of trail already existing, and then the planned trail on the north-south Hydro Corridor east of Ritson Road in Oshawa. And then, the eastern end of the Meadowway would end at Harmony Winchester Road, but would provide connectivity to the primary cycling network on Harmony Road to the Giedron Community as well as to Clarrington. Now, in terms of the recommended approach for implementing the Durham Meadowway, I'll touch on that and kind of give an overview what's in the committee report. So really, what we're looking at here is a three-stage process. So the stage one is what's been completed, and that's the Durham Meadowway Visioning Study. So the attachment to the report was a, had a main study and then an appendix, and this is really our cohesive vision for a legacy project and to help inform future design work, and this is the component led by SBN. And the cost of that was region-funded at $215,000 approximately. And then stage two is the implementation of the Durham Meadowway, proposed over the next couple of years, and this would entail preparing an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, for a scope of work, and the idea is to start the preliminary design through a municipal class and environmental assessment study, and develop, yeah, like a 30% preliminary design, and particularly like the water courses, those are probably the most challenging areas. And then, this would be an estimated cost of about $1 to $1.2 million, and this is the shared funding arrangement that you see. And then, stage three is to be planned, and this would be to allow for the, you know, the sort of design of certain sections at a time and getting them closer to shovel-ready for detailed design and construction, hopefully over the next several years. So really, having a preliminary design in hand through stage two gets us closer to being eligible for external funding opportunities, as often their implementation timelines are tight for eligibility. So I'll touch on the benefits of a three-stage process approach. So really, the idea is this level of coordination to create a new corridor to support cycle tourism in a similar manner to the Waterfront Trail, as well as a utilitarian connection that fills in gaps to the existing primary cycling network. The coordinated approach is, creates great potential for overall municipal cost savings, and from a public purse perspective, it offers an additional public consultation opportunity and allows for these projects to be tendered quicker, easier, to detail design and construction after the preliminary design's done. Also, an important consideration is Hydro One and their transmission requirements. So if they see a design early on and in one go, then we'll be able to outline their requirements early on. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there's a potential for, you know, having a design in hand for external funding opportunities, such as federal provincial funding programs. So in the past, the region's been successful at getting Ontario Municipal Commuter Cycling as well as Federal Active Transportation Fund for planning study funding, and these often, as I mentioned earlier, do have like timelines for eligibility, so having that design in hand will really help. And then, there could be some nonprofit or other type sources of funding potential. And then, in terms of other regional initiatives, there are synergies that could be had with the Durham OneNet broadband installation, so parts of the corridor could be used to provide their connectivity under the path. And then, there's public art and the creative place making policy that could contribute to gateways and perhaps other features along the Meadowway in certain sections or certain areas. And then, the region is also undertaking an ongoing cycling wayfinding and signage strategy, and there's compatibility with that in terms of the regional cycling network and the Durham Meadowway. So in the opportunity for additional public engagement and any route refinements and indigenous consultation, which could help perhaps contribute to the public art aspect, would be in the next stage. So yeah, as the recommendation is before you, the roadmap to advance the Durham Meadowway as we see it, or recommending, is endorsing the visioning study, which is the framework and strategy to implement the project, supporting the creation of an MOU. This would define the project administration role and responsibilities between the region and Pickering, Whitby, Ajax and Oshawa, and then the cost sharing arrangement, and then for the Class EA study. And then, developing the scope of work would be the third step towards getting it into the 2025 budget planning process. And now, I will turn the presentation over to Gerardo Paez, who will get back to the visioning study itself, and will outline how the Durham Meadowway can be a real transformative project.
Thank you Chris. Good morning, members of council, it's an honor and a privilege to be here. My name again is Gerardo Paez Alonso, I'm the Lead Landscape Architect with SBN Architects and Planners, and with me is also Mike Hudson, who is our Senior Landscape Architect and Urban Designer with us, and we are very proud of this project and we take it with a lot of care, and I hope that it shows in the report, that I hope you had a chance to look at it. We also, I just want to acknowledge the amazing help and guidance that we had in Greg and Chris at all times, and I just want you to make sure that you should be proud of the staff that you have, not only the regional staff, but also the staff within the municipalities was so helpful to make this process just be streamlined and seamless, just from one municipality to the other, and through our public consultations, we had a lot of really good turnout from all the municipality staff and from the public, so it was a great process all throughout, so it's fantastic to work with you. The vision itself for the Durham Meadowway, we started with many different things, and as Greg and Chris talked about, this visioning statement was extremely important to get everyone on board, and, but also part of the process was just to understand what is out there, and the projects that you see, there's only a few of them that we studied throughout the processes, the beginning of the process, and one of them, of course, or two of them are in Toronto. The one that is here in front, it's the Scarborough Meadowway, which is basically just the transition between Toronto Scarborough to our Durham Meadowway. And what you see on the screen is, on the upper right image, it's a recently open portion of the trail itself on the eastern side of Scarborough that actually navigates this topography, beautiful topography, of which we have a lot in the Meadowway, we cross a lot of different creeks, and that's something that actually, there's a very strong connection, so if you had an idea, you want to have a better idea of what are the challenges and how they can actually be taken on with a great design approach, this is a very close-to-home example that you can actually go through. The Scarborough Meadowway Trail is about 16 kilometers long, and again, as we said, it gets us to a point where we have the Rouge National Park and Bear Hill Park as the transition to the Durham Meadowway. The other corridor that we talked about throughout the beginning of the project is this Finch Corridor, which is 15 kilometers of a trail that has all these different amenities that we discuss in our report as opportunities for activating that linear green corridor. In this case, there's soccer fields within the Meadowway, something that the Hydro Agency acknowledges as a possibility, something that is very well-used and allows us to maximize our opportunities for active recreation. The next project itself is a smaller-scale project in Hamilton, it's about six kilometers on the Pipeline Trail, and, but it does display a very nice and well-thought, seamlessly-connected trail to its adjacent neighborhood, creating these beautiful gateways and talking about the pipeline, how do you actually make that into something that is fun and a small little active play area, so very, very nice, small interventions that make a big difference about how do you experience the space. The South York Greenway is one of those two-tier governance projects that is being led by York Region, and so it's a great example of the challenges ahead and how having a vision being led by a regional entity brings a lot of, it bears a lot of fruit with regards to having a cohesive and single vision that everyone then can fully support. Before joining SBN, I was part of City of Vaughan's staff, and I had a chance to actually go to one or two of the project meetings for the South York Greenway, and it's a very important effort where all municipalities have the chance to actually help with the guidance of the project, but at the end of the day, you need a champion, someone that actually cares about all municipalities across the same, and you want to have that voice of leadership that helps to implement a very strong, single-minded cohesive project. So the project itself is larger, it's 50 kilometers long, crosses three municipalities, but the challenges are the same. So on the map, basically goes along close to Highway 407, but at the same time, goes through this Hydro Corridor with many different or similar technical challenges. Then we have Simcoe County Collingwood Railway, which is a straight line and there's not a lot of complications, but it's also a great example of how a two-tier government governance model helps to move things forward. Right now, the project itself finished the EA last year, and it's, right now, it's under construction, so there's a lot of cues to take within the leadership position that can actually help to implement and if anything streamline and fast-track the project. The report is very comprehensive, and what we're trying to do here in this presentation is just summarize a few key elements that you can find a lot more information in the report itself. But we treated this Meadowway, Durham Meadowway, as a linear park, and what does it mean that there's a linear park? So the most fantastic part, and for us, the challenge is very different when you take the Durham Meadowway and you compare it to other multi-use paths across other entities that are more urbanized. So city of Toronto will have different challenges. What you see on the screen right now, this red line, which is the Durham Meadowway, it's basically that threshold between an urbanized area to the south, and then a lot of potential for growth to the north, but also there's a lot of farmland, and the most amazing part, one of the most amazing assets, all these different conservation areas and green fingers that you can actually see on the screen so well. And this is the part that was so fantastic and so unique about Durham, that this truly feels like a linear park. If you imagine that this full corridor being implemented in the next few years, you have so many different places that you can actually come down on your bike and enjoy. So it's not only a commuter's route to get to somewhere in Toronto, it's actually within the municipalities, it's a great opportunity for enhancing your active transportation system and getting everyone to connect within the municipalities and get all the sovereign assets, active recreation, passive recreation. The whole corridor itself hits about 114,000 people living within that catchment of the study area, there's about 40,000 people that actually live within 10 minutes walk of that corridor, there's 24 different neighborhoods, 35 road crossings and 26 creek crossings, so it's a big challenge in itself when you start to think about all the different things that need to be considered. The amount of work that was done, it's not exhaustive in that we saw every single meter of the corridor because we didn't even have the time or the budget, but what we had a chance was to actually understand what are the opportunities throughout this corridor in a very comprehensive way. So we did take a look throughout all those kilometers and tried to understand what are the different conditions throughout it. And with that, we started to identify, there's places where you have, you know, neighborhoods just sitting along the corridor, and then on the other side, you have green, and there's other places where you have on both sides, a little bit of a neighborhood, and then some places where there's really nothing other than just green. So there's, we start to identify these different conditions, and then from there, we started to think about this Durham Meadowway linear park, and what are the opportunities of active use and passive use that could go into it, and how the different neighborhoods could start to think about different future initiatives that can actually start to pick upon bringing everyone out, so not only pushing them to actually use their bikes a little bit more, but also have destinations. So all those different things that you see in front are uses that are very compatible with the corridor. And the moment that you start putting together these opportunities or different scenes that we, scenarios that we identified along the corridor, and then the toolkit, you end up with very simple and digestible typologies. And the idea about the typologies is that they bring everything together, they understand that there's places in the corridor where you have more space, and you have different adjacencies to the neighborhoods and different transitions to the neighborhoods, and perhaps that's where you have an opportunity to actually have active play, and in this case, there's opportunity to actually have sports fields, and perhaps there's a small playground that is close to it but not within or underneath the Hydro Corridor, and many other different features like public art or gateways. And one example here that we put in front is this idea of a future district park in Whitby, and how you could start, and just Whitby, just to make a point, because there was this park being planned along, just pretty close to the corridor, and how you could actually maximize your opportunities of active transportation by thinking about that adjacent corridor as an extension of the park, of the play opportunities. So that's the active play typology, and then we had another nature space, because we have these different conservation areas along the trail itself, then there's an opportunity to enhance some of those areas and bring attention to the different natural features. There's a lot of wetlands along the corridor, whether they're immediately adjacent to it or they're within it, and there's an opportunity to actually enhance that and create the smaller places where you can actually bring not only the enjoyment of nature, but also educate people, and then make everyone aware of what the wetland, how important of a role is within the region itself and within the country. The other typology that we looked at is this garden and community, and the idea of having spaces where you can socialize and we can actually, you can have opportunities for neighbors to continually be in touch and, you know, be self-sufficient if that's something that they want and they like. There's a lot of people that have a green thumb, and perhaps, you know, the more the houses are being made and the more that we go into urban formats where there's more townhomes with less backyards and so on, there's opportunities to actually have these places tuck into the corridor itself. It's one of those typologies that you want to have champions to start it, because otherwise, if it's put in front of them, you might just run into an issue where there's infrastructure but not the users, but once you have a couple of users that want actually something like this, it's so interesting how the grassroots just take on, and then this typology works very, very well to actually create animated spaces, and spaces that are very fruitful with regards to not only natural, the natural assets, but also the socializing component. And the other typology that we took on to just understand what are the challenges ahead is this idea of crossings, and there's different types of crossings, in this case was just really road crossings in this typology. There's one or two places where it would be very interesting just for, with regards to how people experience this corridor, not to have to lay down and cross a road, but potentially go under a road, there's not too many of those options. I think something that we understand its costly and something that could be done in the long, long term, where there's more traffic and you want to facilitate a different experience and have people within the corridor itself. But in any other case, the other typologies that we looked at was very, very specific to how do you cross along a mid-block connection on the right, or are you actually hitting the trail in a corner? What do you have to do when you get there? And you can, what you can start to see in the images that were prepared is this idea of branding and wayfinding that Chris was also talking about. This opportunity to create an identity for the Durham Meadowway, so that you can actually always understand that you're navigating within that multi-use path, and whether or not it takes a little bit of a detour, because it has to help users to cross in one, in a more safer way, you always find yourself always connected to this branding, and a very clear reading of what the Meadowway is. The challenge was, of course, trying to identify what is the preferred route. There was different options along this 30-kilometer corridor that we had to take into consideration. So the way that we looked at it took everything in consideration with regards to property ownership, Hydro One secondary uses and licensed, and what is the best route that can actually be created with the current understanding of where things are at? And how can we actually prepare something that is flexible to adapt to other potential future challenges? So there was a lot to take on, and we tried to do it in a very systematic way, but also this is where the engagement with staff in the municipal was very important, and the way that we actually tried to get to it was to provide the best end-to-end routes, based on, again, on the current information and input, but also, we have to identify an interim route. So knowing that the future best route might not be attainable right now, whether it's technical or financially, we needed to have a plan so that if the region wanted to implement this from day one, there was always a route to actually be available. I'm just gonna go to the last slide, basically just picks on one of the most important considerations, which is the agency that has a say on, and all the say on what goes within the corridor itself. There's different challenges and considerations from a design point of view, but definitely there's, the doors are open, and there's, the conversation was started in a very positive light, and there's a lot of opportunities to create all the things that you've seen here and that are prepared within the report to be included within the Hydro Line. The biggest challenge, of course, is that we have this active line where there's not a lot of opportunities to create, you know, substantial amount of landscape or planting because we have a sagging line that, you know, from a safety point of view, it does causes challenges, but nonetheless, to the size, there's a lot of opportunity to do that. Buildings and permanent structures, of course, definitely are not permitted, and there's access to structures, basically all these towers, they have to have access at all points, so it's really just a matter of a technical challenge for the future design of these facilities. Yeah, and then grading, drainage and stormwater management, roads and parking and landscape planting restrictions, and of course, costs, all some of those considerations. And sorry if I took too long, but this is the end of the presentation, if you have any questions.
Okay, so thank you for the presentation, we have a number of questions. Counselor Crawford? Wait a second.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your presentation, this is actually a beautiful route, honestly. It's, you know, it's getting harder and harder to ride bikes on roads for any distance, so this is a wonderful option for anyone who cycles. The cost, my computer suddenly doesn't recognize me, so the cost initially in the, it's the EA, I think, is the first step, right? And so each of the municipalities are responsible for paying that, is that correct?
Through the chair, yes. So we met with the various committees of the municipalities and represented basically a cost sharing formula, which is like that 80%, 20%, and so forth. It basically represents the unbuilt areas of the trail by proportion by a municipality and the general cost of the EA component.
And then, the actual construction, again, the 80/20?
That's to be determined through the EA, as part of that would be the implementation strategy with regards to what that actually looks like.
So I don't want to get, obviously, too much into it, but let's just say in a perfect world, everything goes through and you a perfect world, everything goes through and you have a beautiful pathway. Who looks at, who maintains like the grass and things? Cause it's not really our property, right?
So a part of that was through Hydro One, it'd be a leased component. Uh, so through the air municipalities, uh, through the portions that they would, um, properly, um, it'll, it'll traverse, uh, they would be in, in agreement with Hydro One. It's very similar to the lands that say Ajax has right now through the hydro corridor. There is at least compo- component. Um, and there will be also, um, I guess maintenance components as well. Uh, one of the things with, to, to consider is the access to the Hydro One towers for maintenance. Uh, so through the design, it will be looking at, you know, what's the ideal width? Uh, how do you actually, uh, trans- traverse, uh, looking at the different opportunities within for place making as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Councilor Pickles.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can.
Great, perfect, thank you. So first of all, thank, thank you to the staff working on this. It's a, it's a very exciting project. They've been out to our chambers lately, uh, to update us, so that's very much appreciated. And I look forward to be able to ride my bike out and visit my colleague, big, uh, Councilor Chapman out in, out in Oshawa. Um, I should refer just by the last slide and a couple of the comments, uh, to Councilor Crawford. But we have found that Hydro One is getting a little more particular about what they will allow in their corridors. For example, uh, they don't seem to be too keen on metal soccer posts or, uh, structural playgrounds, uh, like play equipment. And I've, I've, there's a, is there leasing fees now? Is there insurance fees? Can you maybe update us a bit on where your discussions with Hydro One have been with respect to, uh, what they may allow under their corridor and what sort of, uh, costs there may be associated with that?
Sure, uh, thanks for the question through you, Mr. Chair. Um, the Hydro One did provide us some comments on the visioning study draft. And, um, yeah, they do, they don't commit to anything at this point because they don't have a design in hand. It's sort of a, a vision, but they do have, um, yeah, they do have concerns about like structures and, and that. But as far as I know, the provincial second, or the provincial secondary land use program is intended to, um, support licenses for community or public uses. And there may be restrictions on maybe certain kinds of, of structures, but there are sports fields and other sections and where, you know, the hope is we could have sports fields in a couple, at least a couple of locations we've identified in the Durham Meadowway. But we would have, they would have to be further reviewed. They didn't say no, they just did put some cautions to us about setbacks and, and limitations and that. Um, but, uh, and playgrounds, yeah, probably not, but there are a lot of adjac-, there are a couple of examples of adjacent parks that have playgrounds that can connect to the Durham Meadowway and there could be other features that are recreational, um, that are licensed. In terms of the licensing fee, um, there's a, a nominal fee, um, that's a dollar per year. But then there's a property tax fee and that's based on the land that is leased. So, um, there are some areas where, um, you know, there could be the potential of leasing sort of the strip where the multi-use path is and not having to lease the rest of the land, particularly if it's already under another license. Like there are a couple of sections that have agricultural licenses where we could perhaps coexist for a while. I see those agricultural licenses going away over time because as development, you know, is happening all around. Um, but, and a couple have already gone away since we even began the study. But there is that potential, but, um, I, you know, it would be similar to arrangements that, um, like Pollan Park, for example, and then there's a couple of parks in Pickering, I think, the Prince of Wales Park on the north-south corridor, Princess of Wales, I should say, sorry. Um, so I don't, uh, that, that would be an operational aspect and, and that. But, um, but it's, that's kind of the comments and feedback we got from, from Hydro One. But there is a primacy of, you know, obviously transmission is their first consideration, but then public over private uses. So there is a support there from that program. But, um, we, uh, we'd have, that's part of the reason we want the design because they really need something to, to look at and comment, you know, exactly where it's going in terms of the towers and, and where the parks, you know, par- a park use would go and what it would look like.
I, I appreciate that and I'm, I'm very pleased that we're looking into that because obviously, I mean, uh, you know, this idea is, uh, very exciting. It would be a wonderful, and of course we have to take in, into concern safety. But I hope, uh, Hydro One is going to be a partner in this and, and see that utilizing, uh, their lands for public amenities is, is a benefit, uh, not only to us, but to, to them and that, that they're not overly, uh, restrictive or, or costly as these, uh, discussions, uh, proceed. So, uh, a- a- again, excellent work and, uh, very much looking forward to this proceeding. Thank you very much, staff and, uh, and Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Shahid. Sorry.
Thank you through you, Chair. Um, just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I could definitely see the excitement in you and how fantastic this project is coming along and, uh, I loved the presentation. I have a couple of questions on stage two and funding. So we'll be seeking provincial and federal, I'm, I'm assuming. Can you explain the nature of them and the timelines on that?
Uh, through the chairs, just for clarification, the stage two is to look for the detailed design component, uh, to advance this, uh, this project. Uh, this basically is like looking at a de-risking of the project itself. Uh, so therefore their costs. So the cost that we looked at for doing an environmental assessment of this, uh, from Pickering to, to, oh, sorry, from Pickering to Oshawa at thirty-six kilometers roughly, um, is about one point two million to do the environmental assessment. Um, knowing that, you know, there's thirty-six crossings, creeks and, and everything else. Um, with regards to that, it's that one point two, it's the, it's the, it's the cost difference with regards to the future, uh, path itself. So through this is twenty percent, the region will, will, will contribute, um, and then divided amongst the other four municipalities, uh, Pickering, Ajax and Whitby and Oshawa. So, um, you know, that range is accordingly. So for, you know, Whitby itself, um, because of the future, it, the future, um, pathway is eight point six one kilometers, uh, roughly about thirty-one, thirty-one, thirty-two percent, uh, that cost difference is about three, in that three hundred thousand dollar range. And, and so forth with regards to other municipalities. Um, with Oshawa, it's two twenty-five, Ajax, it's one, and one tw- uh, one, one nineteen and Pickering, uh, it's also three-ten.
I see. So this is more of a municipal funding rather than looking outside of other governmental funding?
Yes. So, um, the next stage, uh, once we do have a particular plan in place, uh, opportunities uh, through, through, uh, the federal active transition fund, uh, we will be applying for that. Uh, in the past, we had tried to apply, but we didn't have actual, uh, detailed designs to actually, uh, to initiate the project. Uh, so that kind of hindered us, uh, from applying. Uh, but we are actively looking to, to apply any, any type of funding. So if it does become available, uh, we would apply it maybe to the planning or even that to the implementation stage. Um, very similar to, I would say, the Scarborough Meadowway. The Galen Western Foundation also provided, uh, quite a few hundred million dollars, uh, to that particular project for, uh, for restoration. And hopefully we're able to leverage, um, relationships with TRCA where it has, uh, that relationship with Galen Western Foundation, uh, to look at those opportunities of, uh, that could be applied to the region.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, uh, when we were in the Good Roads, um, conference last year, they took us to the Cherry Park project and that was a three-tier project, municipal, federal and provincial, but that had been the stages of completion at that time. So I, I'm pretty sure you're going to seek all of that, but there was something similar in this line where it was parks and a lot of other things that was incorporated in that. So it was nice to see. Again, this is initial stages, excitement's there. My next question on the fact is, um, it looks like in years and years of effort. So what are you looking at as a very rough timelines from stage two to three and completion?
Uh, through the chair, um, with regards to the, um, we anticipate the EA to take roughly about eighteen months. Um, and then with regards to, you know, if, and once we come back, this being a stage gate process, um, with regards to the funding, um, and implementation, uh, hopefully within that, uh, that five, five, five-year timeframe, give or take, uh, for implementation.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. This is exciting and I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to more stuff. Thanks a lot.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Mayor Pietri. You were next, but your call has been dropped, so if you would push the request, please.
Oh, Mr. Chair, good morning. I just wanted to delve into a little bit more of the, um, uh, the, the conversation about the connectivity and how, um, seeing as it's a, a multi-tier municipality sort of process, here we are at the region and at the city, we're, you know, being asked to fund it. How are we going to see this process through so that it's not disjointed? So that from starting point A to, you know, point Z, it's, it's actually going to be connected? Because just through you, Mr. Chair, I, I don't think there's too many on council that would recall this, aside from Councilor Nichols and Councilor Neal, but not this particular project, but just the, you know, connectivity and, uh, the construction of MUPs and, and, uh, and bike trails as transportation was one of my first planks on a two thousand and three platform. So we're many years hence, we're two decades hence and we're working towards, you know, activating a lot of this stuff. But it comes down to funding and strategy. So just wondering through you, Mr. Chair, how we do that so that there, there aren't pieces missing while we're doing this?
Uh, through the chair. Um, thanks for the question. And I think one of the things that, um, it needs to resonate is that a lot, the Durham Meadowway has been in, I guess, um, in concept since two thousand and five.
Yep.
Right? And, and part of this project was to elevate that importance of this particular trail, right? Uh, to look at what is a vision, uh, for it. So therefore we could actually have that particular buy-in and, and, and understanding of the potential. Um, with regards to the connections, uh, you know, as a Harado and even, um, uh, Chris had highlight, highlighted, there are opportunities along that corridor itself and the importance of taking that leadership of, of engaging the air municipalities, uh, that it crosses is to bring everybody along at the same time so that the, the vision, um, is, is reflective of the needs, right? Of the municipalities and the residents themselves. Um, and that's what, and that's the feedback that we got and the positive feedback, I'd say. Um, it's one of those particular projects, a feel-good projects, I would say. Um, and part of it is also the engagement of stakeholders. So, you know, there's Parks, uh, Parks Canada that was involved, the TRCA, uh, Cloca, uh, there was Hydro One, uh, Infrastructure Ontario that owned the land, um, and so, and, and the municipalities themselves. And so we got a lot of feedback and a lot of outreach with regards to, to, to that project. Um, and what's before you right now is that vision of connectivity. Uh, connectivity to neighborhoods, connectivity to other trails, uh, connectivity to the city of Toronto, um, and, and looking at the active transportation, uh, plans, uh, for the region and also for the municipalities themselves, uh, both existing and future. Um, so it's very comprehensive and this is why, you know, environmental assessment with the partnership of the region and, uh, the municipalities is important. So you could have that, uh, continuity, uh, because sometimes, as we all know, uh, a trans-, um, you know, roads are looked at very much as a network and active transportation needs to be looked as a network too. Otherwise you have a disjointed, uh, system and nobody actually came from point A to point B. Um, and, and also looking at the experience, uh, factor as well. It's not just, uh, residents that we want to be able to have this particular, um, you know, project, uh, legacy project, I would say. It's to create those act- active spaces, uh, those gateways, those community, um, nodes. Uh, so therefore residents outside, um, of the region itself can also come here and create that, um, you know, um, that place that everybody wants to be.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, uh, vision is, is the key word here. And I think, you know, uh, at the time it was largely, um, seen as pie in the sky because, you know, how are you gonna do this with the existing infrastructure? But this is about taking, you know, infrastructure that exists, um, you know, in a different format and, and optimizing it. And I think that, uh, I just wanted to ask through you, Mr. Chair, I think the question about funding was, was, uh, was asked. This seems to be a municipal sort of, um, undertaking in terms of funding. The other municipalities you talked about, Toronto, Hamilton, they're single-tier. Um, is there an opportunity for us to, uh, have we investigated further funding? Because I see this as transportation more than recreation. This, this can be, if you look at the stretch, uh, that you're proposing, um, and then providing that we optimize through other municipalities, like the existing ones in the region, to schedule, uh, in our budgets, when we're going to meet, uh, you know, this opportunity so that we're coordinated, then you're going to have, um, a network that's more about transportation than it is about recreation, in my opinion. Cause otherwise, um, you wouldn't be connecting the entire region in this sense. So could we look at funding, uh, by way of transportation and maybe taking a, a larger role here at the region and to pay for this?
Uh, through the chair, um, I think through the environmental assessments, uh, with regards to the actual cost, uh, what the infrastructure requirements are for, for road crossings and also for streams, um, I think it'll identify and itemize those. Um, and I, I think with any particular implementations, also that of the phasing, what can actually be built with, uh, sooner. Um, as I did mention, you know, at five, uh, give a, give or take, there may be some complexities with regards to soon, uh, sections. Um, but I think having that, uh, environmental assessment will then lay out a clear picture with regards to what, how you can actually achieve, uh, that, that horizon of five years. And so the idea here is also have shovel-ready projects. Um, with, when it comes to funding, uh, that would also, as I did mention, the EA is also a de-risking. Uh, it, it highlights basically what are the opportunities, but also highlights what are the actual costs, uh, within that kind of like five to, uh, to twenty percent. But with that as well, the funding with regards to the federal active transition fund or even if there's an, uh, a provincial funding, uh, we will be exploring those. We were successful with regards to, um, the OMCC and also that, um, working with the municipalities to develop, um, MUPs across the board, uh, but also with regards to the federal active transition fund. Uh, I know there's another round of funding coming up and we were also successful for that. I know that, um, I believe it was Whitby, they received, I think, seven million dollars of, for the waterfront trail as part of their particular application. Um, uh, so there is particular funds available, uh, but we will seek those funds.
Okay, and, and I just wanted to, through you, Mr. Chair, just end the, uh, the sort of, uh, line of question with, um, you know, my compliments by way of another question in that you'll continue to work with municipalities, uh, to, to schedule. Because, I mean, when we look at the, the scope of the project, this is a pretty big project. You know, when someone thinks of trails, they'll think of a pathway with, you know, some, you know, soft infrastructure. This is a big project. So coordinating it through vision is one thing and the other is through function and, and you'll be able to speak to all of us and say, listen, uh, we need you to schedule your budget accordingly in order for us to deliver this. And, and we see this even with transit projects like, uh, Metro Links. I mean, it takes years. Um, you'll go through the EA process, you'll go through the, the, you know, the visioning exercises, but really it's the funding and, and being shovel-ready. So just wanted to ask through you, Mr. Chair, how are you going to do that? And what timeline that's going to take for us to be able to execute and deliver?
Uh, through the chair. Um, with regards to the, the funding itself, it's identifying what that actual cost is by a municipality for their sections. Um, and that, yes, as part of this, um, given that EA is part of a, um, I would say a partnership with regards to the four municipalities, it's having that clear, um, delineation with regards to, um, you know, what assets need to be paid for, right? Very similar with any particular schedule. And I think we're able, we'll be able to do that through the EA as part of the implementation. Um, and so when we do write the, um, terms of reference, we'll have that articulated. Um, and so we'll come back as part of the, as a process, uh, to provide that, those numbers with regards to, um, what needs to be, to be considered. And I also highlight that, you know, we've also had meetings with, um, Ministry of Transportation, uh, along this particular corridor, it does cross the four twelve. Um, and the Ministry of Transportation were quite open and supportive of, of using actually infrastructure of a tunnel underneath the four, uh, four twelve. Um, and so, you know, even those particular discussions and thinking, um, not just within ourselves, but other agencies. Uh, so therefore there's that, um, cost, um, considerations. Um, you know, that's been one of the things that we've looked at. Uh, we've tried to, to, to have a, a, a open, a, a wide net with regards to those considerations. And with regards to any cost, we're very cognizant of cost, um, especially with regards to the budget pressures, uh, even for this particular year. And that's why we're looking at with regards to the, you know, the shared of the one point two million, looking at, uh, it with regards to budget pressures for twenty twenty-five in consideration. So giving enough runway with regards to the municipalities and the region for consideration.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, oftentimes, um, you know, municipalities apply for grants and funding. We've heard of a number of municipalities that, you know, either get a great deal more or, you know, don't get any. Uh, just wanted to make sure that that was flagged to through you, Mr. Chair, to, to those putting this project together that maybe, you know, that maybe, you know, there may be an opportunity for the region to apply for on behalf of municipalities. And we've seen that with transit back in 2005, when we amalgamated, we saw the benefit of that. Funding flows a little easier to larger, you know, sort of corporate municipal bodies than it does to municipalities that may be challenged by political representation at different levels. So just wanted to make sure that that was flagged through you, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank you very much, because this is an exciting project. I look forward to seeing it realized.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Yeah, this is an exciting project, being a proponent of outdoor activities. I read the report, and I'm just curious why it stopped in Ashwood, or why wasn't Clarendon a part of this project?
Through the chair. Thanks for that question. If you would look at the map itself, the next, most of the area it goes through are, it was extended basically from Simcoe at the request of the City of Ashwood to Harmony. If you look beyond that, the urban area is, there's nothing right now. The next particular area is Salina. We have, are going to be engaging with the municipality of Clarendon with, as you go about doing your active transportation corridor, or plan, I should say, and if there's an opportunity to extend, we will look at that. But right now, the Gatineau Corridor continues in that particular area by Harmony. And then there are also different leases right now beyond that area that need to be considered. With regards to, you know, the 2005 comment, the area municipalities between, you know, Pickering to Ashwood, they have it actually in their particular plans. It's also identified in the regional cycling plan as that particular Durham Meadowway. So we're using that document and that, that trail alignment as our guide.
So you're saying you're doing this based on 205 information rather than current? Is that correct?
No, we have, through the chair, we updated our regional cycling plan in 2021, and that's reflecting of the Durham Meadowway extension from a conceptual perspective as a crow flies. But with regards to extending to Clarendon, the opportunity to extend beyond Harmony hasn't been determined, mainly because there isn't that opportunity to connect to other, I guess, urban areas that the Gatineau Hydro Corridor would follow.
Okay. You're going to consider this and through the chair in future? Are you going to, is there any plans to look at?
Through the chair. As the municipality of Clarendon works on their active transportation plan, we will work with staff to look for any opportunities for connectivity.
Okay. Can I have Clarendon staff reach out to you then?
Yeah, sure. Through the chair, yes. We have been in conversation with them, but we will happy to have that conversation again.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor McDougall.
Thank you for the presentation, and as a cyclist and a runner and a guy who likes enjoying the trails as much as I do, I greatly enjoy seeing these projects come forward. Just to follow up on something that councillor Crawford had asked in terms of maintenance. If I remember correctly, the Meadowway that was visioned in Scarborough was generally, the idea was it was to be a meadowway, and generally maintenance-free native plants, native flowers. Is that the vision for this, or is the idea that it's going to be a manicured kind of thing that will be costly for taxpayers in any individual municipalities to maintain?
Sure, through you, Chair Henry. That's a good question. And we kind of see it as a bit different than the Scarborough Meadowway, just in terms of the adjacent uses. And I think the visioning study, you know, it's about sort of finding, says, certain moments along the corridor, kind of like, you know, there's certain like beads on a necklace, or certain like nodes where we've identified. You know, like sort of active play or the nature space type uses. But I think for some other areas, I think we would perhaps, you know, it would be up to, you know, I guess the area municipality or someone like TRCA, if they wanted to naturalize a corridor in terms of the, you know, the restoration of the grass, grasses. But we have certain areas where we've identified, but then other areas where maybe it would just be the trail and everything would be sort of as-is. And there are a couple areas too where we would have, we hope we could still coexist with, say, an agricultural lease. Like there's a few towards like Windfields area where there's, I don't know how much longer they'll be there, but, you know, we hopefully can coexist with those and just, you know, have the trail, and then the farmer can still lease the land from Hydro One. So, yeah, we sort of see it as moments, but not the whole corridor. There's a lot of areas we'd like to keep. But of course, as part of the environmental assessment or, you know, the preliminary design study, where there's water course crossings, obviously we'd have to look at impacts and, you know, mitigation and maybe some restoration of some of the valley lands to get the path through. But, yeah, it's a bit of a mix, whereas, yeah, the Scarborough Meadowway was more, it's more about, yeah, they're going in phases and restoring the meadows and putting in native species. And we'd like to do that, but I just don't maybe see us doing it everywhere in the corridor just because of the, just the sheer scale of it and how, you know, some areas are a little more like, sort of on the urban fringe than others. So I hope that answers it.
Very good. Thank you. And further through you, Mr. Chair, you gave a great statistic of there's 40,000 people within a 10-minute walk of the trail. I'm assuming that's in terms of today's numbers, not in terms of 2041, when we see, you know, massive population growth. My question is, is how many people, I mean, you probably don't have the number, but how many people would be within a 10-minute cycle of that trail?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, yeah, so the 114,000 is the existing population, existing within the greater study area, and that's sort of like the area of influence. So that's like a 20-minute walk-ish, so that's probably closer to your 10-minute bike ride. So and that 114, I think, is really based on more of a 2016 number, so I think it's probably a little higher now. But, yeah, so it would be, yeah, that's sort of 20-minute walk. It's not exactly, you know, an exact distance, but it was sort of that area where we saw, you know, where we wanted to look at, you know, all the connectivity to and from the corridor, and that's why we called it the Greater Study Area.
And further through, Mr. Chair, is part of the visioning, I'm assuming that the green fingers that show up in the maps, I can't help but think of Ashwood and the creek trails that exist in Ashwood. Is part of the visioning that one day this trail system will connect down to the waterfront trail? You'll be able to loop over whatever distance you want next, to the next green finger, hopefully, and kind of back up to this trail, so that people are not doing out and back rides or out and back runs or walks all the time?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, very much so. We identified a few connections on the regional trail network. Some are like a multi-use path type of connection, like existing or planned. And then some are like the Seaton Trail, like an off-road trail where it's really just hiking. So there's a bit of a, maybe a bit of both, but most, a lot of them, like, we've identified, there's the two north-south Hydro corridors, the one would be the one in Ashwood that are planned. That'll provide really good north-south connectivity. There's the West Ashwood Creek, just sort of the west end of Windfields. That's part of the regional trail network in Ashwood's active transportation plan. There's a couple other like more local trails that are north-south. So the other hope is that, I mean, currently you have the waterfront connection through the Iroquois Trail that exists, and a lot of cycling exists through Whitby there. There's a couple gaps, but for the most part, it's there. That's an existing, but the hope is to have more of those, you know, they have north-south and, and it's sort of different intervals along the route.
Okay, thank you. And one, and a further question is, is on slide six, there's a PCN, an on-road existing facility that's shown on Taunton Road, and then at the Highway 412, it just, it just ends, it just stops. I'm assuming that connection's not there today. Is that, and I'm assuming that the connection to get underneath the 412 and back over to Taunton Road is not there as of right now. So is this going to be a gap that's planned into this network in the future?
Through the chair. As I highlighted, we did speak with Ministry of Transportation and presented several options in consultation with the town of Whitby. So what you do see there, that Taunton section there does exist, sorry, a Taunton section does exist. That way you're trying to use existing infrastructure. There may be enhancements to it. But as you get across, to get back to the Hydro Corridor, we're looking at that particular experience, the 412 being, you know, an obstacle. And so there is a, I would say, a wildlife refuge path underneath a tunnel, and it is an opportunity. So we had explored that opportunity with MTO, which they're quite supportive of. And so there is a gap along Taunton itself that's identified as, as part of the primary cycling network as well. So that will be an opportunity as well. But with regards to the Durham Meadowway, it will follow the path in that yellow line underneath the 412.
So just further to ask on that, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't see a pink line that connects the PCN to the Hydro Corridor on the east side of 412. Is that?
There should be a pink line. Yeah.
So I wasn't sure if there was a plan to get the PCN over and join to the trail on the west side or to the, okay. Very good, thank you. And then one last question is in terms of, just to follow up, in terms of the phasing. So some of this will be low-hanging fruit and relatively easy to do. Some of this is going to be difficult, perhaps this section here, or perhaps other sections. Will the phasing be planned in such a way, such that we're not stranding people in an area such, construct it now because it's easy, but we strand them somewhere and leave them in a situation where there's a gap?
Through the chair. I think through the environmental assessment, and once we do the detailed design, I think those opportunities to actually have proper links would make sense to then, you know, just end it in a random location. I don't think that's the objective. The objective is to have it go from point A to point B. So if it's from one particular road to the next. But I think through the, looking at the challenges, there may be some low lying fruit, as you did highlight, and that we could have those connections, say, for instance, from, you know, Simcoe to Taunton, right? That might be easier. So at least, you know, it then can develop. You could also look at potential gateways as well as place-making, opportunities for public arts and such gathering spaces. And I think those would also help with regards to, you know, the evolution of this.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Dice?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your report. It's a very exciting project. And my question has kind of been asked already, but I wanted to emphasize and ask also the importance of the trail connections in each municipality. I think you needed a connection south to the waterfront trail in each municipality. And I know it'll be the municipality's responsibility, but can we not include that idea in the plan so that we plant that seed and we look, you know, we look forward in the future to doing that?
Through the chair. I think the plan itself does look for those opportunities, north-south and east-west. We looked at, you know, within the greater study area and also in the adjacency, looking at the plans that the municipalities have. But I think, as you do clearly highlight, the connectivity north-south to different trails are part of the plan as it exists today.
And the municipalities will obviously have a little more insight into that. It's not always a perfect situation, but at least if you have a, you know, a safe lane on a road to ride, it is a connection to where you, where this destination will be. And there's also, I think, the economic development aspect of this as well. So you've got through the Great Lakes Waterfront Trail, you have 3,600 kilometers now of trails. Not always the perfect ones, but they're also utilizing the railway trails. But they also help promote economic development in the community. So if you're going to build, for example, a trail south in Ajax on Westney Road, well, that doesn't really service the cycling or tourism aspect of it, because what they're looking for is where's the brewery, where's the winery, where are the shops, and where do I eat? Washroom, you know, they've got to regenerate, that kind of thing. So I think when we look at it too, is it possible to look at those areas in municipalities that will benefit as well as the tourists?
Through the chair. The region right now is looking at a regional wave-finding and cycling signage project. That's more for looking at the primary cycling network. But I also know that the tourism side of things, they're also looking at creating tourism loops that would be identifying businesses as well. So I think maybe there is a synergy there.
That's great. Thank you. And is there any, where are emergency points of access along the trail?
Through the chair. We haven't looked at that in detail. There are, you know, various road crossings, and there are also various, I would say, connections to different communities. But through that, we'll have to look at, through the design itself, we'll have to look at that.
The connections north are also important, too. I know I get many questions from cycling clubs about the lack of connections to the north. Everybody would like to go into the rural areas, so that's another aspect.
Through the chair. I think that that's a consideration we'll take in. I think once this project has that detailed design and those opportunities, those connections could be realized.
Thank you very much.
Just one follow-up through you, Mr. Chair, on like emergency access. So for Hydro One, so for the alignment of the route, we tried to, like, we were thinking, oh, would Hydro One like us to use an existing entrance where their maintenance vehicles kind of go in and out? And they actually prefer us to be separate from them, so we create our own connection. And then they keep, you know, because they have those, they're not like roads per se, but they're, you know, those where they have like an entrance off of an arterial road, let's say, like Ravenscroft or Westney or something, right? And they, and they approach the corridor. So they like us to be kind of, maybe not in those areas. So then that way they can get, you know, if there's a issue with maintenance, then they're not interfering with the Meadowway and vice versa. So anyways, that's just a little add-on, but that was one comment we did get from them. So we try not to, not to co-locate, but to try to be a bit separate.
Thank you.
Councillor Wu?
Thank you. Through the chair. And first, I'd like to thank my fellow councillor from Clarendon, the regional councillor for words one and two, for bringing up Clarendon, because the Gatineau Corridor does run through Clarendon. But speaking about the pathway, on the, one of the slides, it says 30 kilometers as the crow flies. But it's going to take a few zigzags, but along that corridor, how much is under the, or aligned with the Gatineau Corridor? I would imagine most of it, or as much as possible.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I do have that number. Give me a second here. Yeah, there's about 70%, roughly 70% is on the Hydro Corridor or on publicly-owned open spaces just outside of the corridor. In other words, not on road right-of-way. About 30% is on road right-of-way. And I believe within the transmission corridor itself, I think we're looking at about, I think it's about 19 or 19 and a half, 20 in that neighborhood. So most of Pickering is on the Hydro Corridor, lands that are, that are owned by Infrastructure Ontario and all, pretty much all of Ashwood, a good chunk of Whitby. Ajax is probably the one where they, because they have Taunton Road. Because where the Hydro Corridor is in Ajax, it's on Deer Creek, there's a sod farm, there's the railway, there's Highway 412. It's pretty difficult. So, yeah, I'd say about 19 and a half, 20 kilometers.
Because along a Hydro Corridor, what is the ease button that they have on, from the towers?
Yeah, there's all these different setbacks, and there, yeah, there's some requirements that are shown there. They have like, I can't remember the exact dimensions, but they just, one thing that came out in the design work, and Harado maybe will speak to it a bit more, is they do like the trail to weave a little bit, rather than just be like poker straight. And as long as you're keeping setbacks from the towers, and they prefer us, I think, not to be where future expansion is planned. So sometimes there's extra width within the Hydro Corridor lands where there's no towers. So that'd be a great place for us to locate, right? But they don't want us to impede, let's say if there's another line that's needed. So they prefer us to be, I think, within the existing sort of tower footprint. But, yeah, there's a lot of design considerations that go in, but that's just something we have to, we have to work through.
Yeah, and a good point that you bring up there, because, and I would imagine you've been speaking with Hydro One or the IESO. That was the acronym I was trying to get right yesterday, Independent Electric- That was the acronym I was trying to get right yesterday, Independent Electricity System Operator. Because as you probably are well aware, they are looking at refurbishing the Gatno Corridor, again, from the 230 kilovolt circuits, or they're looking at building a new double-circuit 230 kilovolt transmission line to Dobbins, which is Peterborough, from either the Clarrington, Oshawa infield site, or Cherrywood. So how does that affect this particular project? And is there opportunities to work together so that we can, during the construction, we can save, well, the economies of scale?
Yeah, it's a good point. The IESO, we did see their review of the, I think it's the East GTA in Eastern Ontario, they had, did a report, and we did actually meet with them last year, representative from IESO, on their future plans. So we're not sure if our design will be out of the gate first, or if their environmental assessment for, you know, upgrading the corridor. But we'll work with them, of course, and hopefully, like, Hydro One will probably be plugged into IESO's work as they review, you know, what upgrades they'll make. But I'm thinking, as long as we can work with them, it may not affect all of our corridor too. I know they're looking at a couple options, whether they extend from Cherrywood Easterly, the transformer station in Cherrywood in Pickering, or if they go from the Darlington one, just east of Harmony, you know, east of Townline Road there. So we're not quite sure. So depending which one they go from, it may be like not, like none at all, or it might be a sort of part of the corridor that they'll be upgrading. We're not quite sure yet.
Well, you may wish to speak with Hydro One. The mayor and I have had conversations already, speaking with, about what the transmission corridors and the upgrades, especially with the SMRs from, the additional four SMRs from Darlington, the refurbishment at Pickering. So you may want to speak with them, and if there's any impact to this at all.
Yeah, and we'll be engaging. Like, they don't, they don't provide us, they provided us some over, like overarching comments, some specifics to look for as we work through the design. But yes, we'll continue to engage with them as we work on the, you know, the EA preliminary design work, because yeah, their input will be critical, and hopefully, that's some of the aspects we'll be looking for, is not just what's there today, but what their future plans. Hopefully, they know, they'll know in the next year or so, they'll have some ideas of, you know, are they replacing this line with, maybe the towers shift slightly, or maybe, maybe they just, maybe they have a new line? It's hard to know, right? But yes, well, that's part of the reason we like to advance it, so we have, how we have that defined, rather than, you know, just having this sort of conceptual line on a map. We know where it's going in and out of the corridor, but we don't know exactly where on the corridor. So yeah, that'll be, that'll be important input for sure. Thank you.
And my other question, and again, this goes to something Counselor Mayor Pietri did say about, you want an end-to-end route, but you're dealing with four municipalities. And how do you get around? Because again, my colleague mentioned about the disjointed. You know, I think Ajax is a shorter route, then you have longer ones, but how do you keep that so it flows nicely, that it is end-to-end?
Through the chair, I think part of that is the detailed design, but also the vision itself. If you can see the vision itself, it looks at those obstacles, and we try to find those a way around, the mitigation measures. So, you know, you tie it into the city of Toronto through, to the Rouge National Park, connects to the Meadowway, the Meadowway connects to the trail system in Toronto, you go all the way downtown. Similar to this, you know, connecting from Pickering to Ajax to Whitby, looking at those, looking at the, you know, the 412 challenge with regards to crossing and then gauging the agencies appropriately, looking or going away to Oshawa, right, itself. There are, you know, it's not a flat, flat lands, you know, it does go up and down. And I think looking at that, the detailed design will then provide, you know, look at the slope, the grade itself, and what those connections are from roadways itself. I think 26 roadways that we've identified, and having that connectivity that everybody could sign off on and say, look, this is, this makes sense. And I think we've taken that similar approach with regards to the regional cycling plan, with regards to understanding that it's a network, right? Similar to this particular route, for it to be successful, 36 kilometers from end to end, it needs to connect, right? Can't just stop at a boundary. And I think that's one of the challenges, but that's also one of the things of working in partnership, right, with the municipalities and the region as a whole, is that everybody actually has that particular buy-in and understanding of that connectivity.
Okay, thank you, and very exciting. I'm glad for my colleagues along the lake shore. Thank you.
Mayor Carter, you were on the list after Counselor Neal, and it's dropped. Have you withdrawn? Okay, thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess my question is to Greg through you. We had past presentations. Is it going to Harmony Road or is it not, like?
Through the chair, it is going to Harmony Road to connect into the Kedron community.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor Shahid, you've already spoken once, but you're on the list again.
Sorry, I have one.
Okay, Counselor Kerr.
Sorry, I was somewhat distracted by the mayor of the great city of Oshawa here this morning. Just one area of questioning. I mean, the economic development benefits for transit are legion, as they say. I think that's terrific. The opportunities for people to use this to get to city cores and entertainment venues are terrific. I'm wondering, are there sites along this route where during the Canadian summer, which is usually full of construction on roads, is there a place or places along here where summer events could be run of a significant scale that people would come from all over? I'm not necessarily thinking of music concerts, but, you know, butter tart festivals, any kind of things that would inspire people to get on a bike maybe for the first or a time or a long time since, and begin to travel somewhere along the Meadowway that they would go to those kind of events and then ride home safely afterward?
I'll take this. Through the chair, and I think part of that is looking at the different typologies. As somebody mentioned, it's like pools along, along the chain. We've looked at, you know, community parks, and maybe district parks accordingly along the, along the route. There may be opportunities with regards to gateways themselves as to how large they are for gathering spaces. But, you know, to your particular point, there are opportunities to connect to our large places off-site, if the municipality has those facilities available, right? Call it an Instagram moment or whatever, you are able to attract, depending on the public art that you do provide, the amenities themselves. But I think that's will all be part and parcel with regards to the realization of this trail itself. I think once the trail is built, there may be other, there might be other creative opportunities that might pop up to create further spaces themselves. But through the detailed designs, also identifying what lands are available, so therefore we could actually program it accordingly.
Yeah, so I, one other thing might be just straight cycling events, clinics, bring your bike, get it repaired, whatever, those kind of cycling-related ones that could be done right alongside the path as opposed to having to think about creating an amphitheater or some costly facility, whether they could just have it on the grass either side of the path. That's all. I just think if there's consideration for that, that's probably a, you know, economic development tourism thing for the region, and it could be municipal as well. But thank you very much, gentlemen. As I say, it's an exciting project and great to see this coming to fruition, hopefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. That exhausts all the questions, so great job, and thank you. Members of council, there are no delegations, there is no correspondence, there is one report. Counselor Chapman is the chair of planning and economic development. Thank you. Looking for a secondary? Counselor Shahid? The item is now on, the recommendation is now on the floor. I'm looking to, okay, Counselor Yamada?
Good morning. I just had a question through staff. Can staff sort of walk through the decision for the region only to pay the $240,000? I feel that, you know, this being spearheaded by the region, maybe this should be 50%, 50% paid by the region, and the balance being divided by those, by the four municipalities.
Through the chair, thanks for that statement, that comment. With regards to the visioning study, the region did pay the $215,000. We are looking with regards to this cost-sharing formula for the, for the design. You know, I think the, you know, looking at, given that this was in everybody's plans since 2005, we thought it was the right move to basically help to elevate it. So we didn't, we then took on that particular responsibility and then engaging with regards to the municipalities. As it comes down to particular costs, we looked at the 20%. If you add that particular cost to the visioning study, you'd see that, you know, it's close to $500,000 investment with regards to the region itself, with regards to the municipalities. If the region wasn't part of this, the municipalities would have to foot the costs solely by themselves with regards to the detailed design. So there is a synergy or economic benefit with regards to partnering as a whole.
And I'm not against the partnering. I just feel that maybe the region could pick up a little bit more of the cost. I'd be open to putting on the floor an amendment that the cost share for the class EA study be divided 50/50, if I could get a second.
Well, before we do, I accept that. I'm going to go to the commissioner, please.
So if I may through the chair, there's a few delicate comments I might wish to make. I mean, firstly, of course, we had a really big struggle yesterday in dealing with our regional budget, and the biggest discussion was around future implications. And as you would note from this presentation, the funds that are being put forward from a regional perspective are for the 2025 budget. And we had quite a discussion yesterday on what implications of future budgets may look like. However, the other comment I would like to make is that for things like trails and recreation-type facilities, the local level has the opportunity to put that into development charge, background studies and bylaws and fund at least growth-related portions through that. The region does not have that ability. It's not a service level that the region of Durham is allowed to include in its development charges, background study and bylaw. So there are funding opportunities from a local perspective that are not available to the region. And the other thing we spoke of yesterday that relates to this somewhat as well is that there are also numbers of funding opportunities for infrastructure-related things that are also not available to the region that have been made available to local levels. So from the perspective of funding of this, it was essentially looked at that, you know, 20% at the region in order to do this high-level facilitation and really help the locals move this forward as a signature project. But when we get into the nitty-gritty after that, I think we really need to talk about the, I'll say, ownership of the property of the facility and what opportunities each local may have to deal with funding that may not be an opportunity at the region. So I hope that's helpful to council, but we really are struggling with a dearth, with a lack of funding opportunities at the regional level. And so we certainly want this project to move forward and are looking to facilitate as many ways as possible. But I would suggest caution at this point from a regional funding perspective beyond what's proposed.
Okay, Counselor Yamada?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Pietri.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair. Just going to ask for a recorded vote. And then ask also, when it comes to development charge bylaw here at the region, I know that we've increased them substantially. And as part of that, did we undertake development charge bylaw review where we would be able to include things like these? And if we did and it hadn't, I guess, been executed yet, then could we not look at that as a, as an update? Because I think that whether you're included in this corridor in terms of the visioning exercise, the EA and the completion of the project or not, you heard Clarrington, but you also are going to hear from other municipalities in the north that may not be part of this, that would, may like to connect in the future. We're going to need to help them because they won't have the same resources as us. And even if they do have the same as us, I think in fairness, I don't mind the question asked by Counselor Yamada, the 50/50 proposition, if we are prepared through our development charge bylaw to have that included.
Ms. Taylor?
If I may through the chair, the development charges bylaws rests on your existing service levels, and you can only maintain existing service levels through your development charges. Because this falls into a category of parks and recreation, there is not a service level that exists, so that would mean that the calculation would come out at zero. So we can only fund growth-related capital projects to the service level that are currently being provided. So, and of course, as all of you are aware, and we had some great discussion on this yesterday, even if we were to reopen the bylaw that we just got through, that would put us back to 80% on the entirety of the bylaw. So we would lose dramatically more money than the $56 million that we spoke of yesterday that we've lost up to December 31, 2023.
And I think, I appreciate that, but it seems that we're looking at it from the context of parks and recreation. I specifically, you know, included the context of transportation. Just wondering if we can speak to that, because if it's a question of how to interpret the bylaw or whether there's terminology in there for us to activate transportation, I see this as transportation. And I think for the most part, you know, I think in the future, if you're not going to be connecting the region, then it may be recreation. But if you're connecting and you're speaking of it as an MUP and activating it with the intent of transportation, which I fundamentally believe it is, just wondering through you, Mr. Chair, if we can find a way to extract some dollars to help the local municipalities here that run through transportation.
So two things, if I may. Firstly, on the, on the transportation front, certainly there are agreements with the locals with respect to multi-use trails that are adjacent to regional roads, and so there's lots of discussion there. I would also suggest to you, though, that the DC cash flows for transportation are hugely limited and restricted and are causing an issue with us being able to provide the growth-related transportation infrastructure. That being said, the goal today is to get the EA underway, and that will provide a significant amount of clarity on exactly what works are included, what those dollar values are, where they're located. And certainly, when that information is available, we would always look to see what would be appropriate or possible. Without that information, we really can't determine that, other than to say that it certainly doesn't look good at this point from a regional perspective. But we would certainly, the end result of the EA, as the staff have described, is to really come up with what exactly would be built and how and when and what would be the pricing and options. And then we could take a look at whether there were any opportunities at that point in time.
Commissioner, thank you for providing that level of detail and the openness to looking at it in the future. Through you, Mr. Chair, because I think we talked about the challenges, we've been talking about them for a while now at the budgetary level here at the region, but I can assure you that the local municipalities are under even more pressure. So I think we not only have to look at it through the EA process, but throughout if we're going to actually deliver this. I think it's important for us to recognize that if one municipality isn't able to financially, you're not going to have a project that is completed and connected essentially to the level that you'd like through the EA. So... completed and connected essentially to the level that you'd like through the EA. So I just caution us to take a look at maybe some options in the future where we can start looking at the alignment of each other's budgets. And if there are gaps in there, have a, a process in which we can either piggyback from and apply for funding at other levels, or, you know, in the case of Counselor Yamada's suggestion, look at means for us to, to up the ante and, and increase the percentage that's being offered by the region. Because it comes down to delivering. Envisioning something and having a document that's well-done, like the one that's being presented today, means very little if the, if the actual project isn't delivered. And I think that that's what the average person is looking forward to. And I think if we can look at how we best do that in a timely way, that, that's going to benefit everyone in the region, not just, you know, the, those delivering the project, but the entire community. Thank you.
Okay. Online, Madam Clerk? Okay. Members of council, that exhausts the request to speak on this item. There was a recorded vote called by Counselor Mayor Piattari. Madam Clerk, I'll call that vote now.
This is the recommendation in the report.
This is the recommendation in the report, yes. Sorry?
It's a yes.
Yeah. Okay. So thank you, that carries. There are no confidential matters, which leads us, Madam Clerk, to adjournment? Okay. Looking for a motion adjourned? Counsel Chapman, seconded by Counselor Wa, or Mayor Watten. On the motion to adjourn, call the vote. All who's in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much to staff. Great presentation. Have a wonderful day, members of council and staff.